Yes, we are now live.
Okay, great. Thank you, Carrie Anne. Welcome, everyone. I'm Phil Dunne, President of the Board of Education. Welcome to tonight's Board of Ed meeting. I believe we had 101 people registered for tonight's board meeting. The attendance is great, but I don't know if there's 101 people out there. But for those that did take the time, thank you. I appreciate that. Sorry for the delay that we had. We really like to start on time at 7:30. We're a little bit behind. We got caught up a little bit in exacting. My apologies to that. Normally at this meeting, we'd stand right now for the pledge to the flag, but then there's no flag. And like I've always said in the past, and also been at the meetings, please thank a veteran and for all the freedoms and the privileges that we enjoy in this great country that we have. Also, the fire code announcement. Actually, there's no reason to point out any fire exits, but I always talk about a quick fire safety tip. With this pair of stone that we have, there might have been a lot of people using generators. And if you're in the event of thinking of getting one because you might have lost electricity, just be aware of where you put that generator outside your house. Make sure it's not by an open window where the fumes might be able to make it back into the house. In the event that you do use a generator, make sure that your carbon monoxide device is operational. So in the event that it does happen, the warning would go off because you don't want to be asleep and have that sweep into the house. With that, we're going to move on to our ISOP Pride and Presentations. Dr. Semel, I don't think we... There's no Pride and Presentations right now, other than just every... Okay, my screen just changed. Okay. Dr. Semel?
No, there are no ISOP Pride presentations right now.
All righty. We're going to move on right now to our consent or consent agenda items. Can I... Is there anything from the Board of Ed on any of our agenda items that you'd like to talk about before we make a vote?
I did have one question.
Sure.
It is on one of the personnel... Personnel schedules. I believe it's A5. And I just noticed that the... It's not pulling up on my board docs. I noticed that the music department has been left blank. The music and theater department has been left off there. I believe it says pending. It's not coming up on my board docs, but do you see it?
A5?
The X schedule activities, but it's not coming up on mine either.
It's not coming up on mine.
High school musical production.
I was listening to the musicals.
Yes, all of that. And there was one in the upper half of it.
The ISOP High School Musical Production Team.
All of those in the theater.
It's the art director, the choreographer,
Yes.
the music director, stage crew advisor, technical director, vocal director.
I was just wondering why they were still blank and if that's if that's normal or if that's COVID related.
I think it is typical. You know, if we were to move forward with a musical production, we of course would advertise and be sure that we had those positions filled in time to get our musical off the ground.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the Board on any of our agenda items? And I should have referenced this earlier. Anyone out there in the public, if you have any questions on the agenda items, please type in a question and I will be glad to answer any questions you might have on our... That would be anything from 5A through 5L. I don't see anything popping up on the one. I'm sorry. It's the question. Did you just retweet? So sorry, timing. You have a question on item 5E, and this is Megan Zachary. I'm just waiting for what your question is. Okay. Dr. Semel, do you see that? It's Megan Zachary is asking a question. Is that?
Right.
For our district services or evaluations.
I'm going to ask Kate, is that District Services? I believe that's an evaluation. Am I correct?
Yes, it's for an evaluation that we have for a parent request for one of our students. For two evaluations. Yep. That's why we have that contract being approved hopefully tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunne. Okay, and you're welcome, Mrs. Zachary. I'm glad we were able to answer your question. Okay. And I don't see any other questions out there from the public. Okay, all right. With that said, then I'd like to get a motion for consent agenda items 5A through 5L. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So that was Mr. Leggio, and the second is Mrs. Flor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion will carry. Just waiting for that to pop light. And it did. Seven four again. Okay.
Mr. Dunne?
Yes?
Were we going to do a standalone vote on one of those items?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. We didn't. No, we weren't. So Mrs. Fitzgerald, would you go to the personnel schedules, please?
Of course. Good evening. So tonight on the A1, our instructional appointments, we are proud to welcome three new educators to the ISOP schools. We are appointing a kindergarten teacher at Wayne Elementary, second grade teacher at Cress, and a science teacher at ISOP High School. So congratulations to all those folks. On the A5 is our X schedule, our club advisors for the upcoming school year. On our A13, the appointment of the Improvement Plan Committee under the instructional side also includes some summer curriculum writing. The B1, we're appointing an individual monitor at the high school for the upcoming school year. On the B2, we have a resignation of a security guard as well as the conclusion of two substitute security guards. And finally, on the B13, which is the non-instructional appointments, you'll see the Improvement Plan Committee participants initially, and we do have three individual monitors for ESY as well. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
Mr. Zenderberg, would you just go over 5J, the authorization of the budget transfer for technology supplies and devices, please?
I'm going to pass you off to Mr. Smalley. It's his transfer.
Hi, everyone. So we recognize the need, obviously, early on as soon as the new budget year rolled in, where we would have to reallocate some of the different funding in different curriculum areas and to pull it together to purchase more devices, laptops. And by us being able to do that, we bring all that money into one place to be able to kind of purchase it. Some of the money would have already been allocated towards the laptop purchase, but with this, with this transfer, we're able to buy close to 200, between 230 and 240 new laptops for the next school year.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Smalley. Appreciate that.
Mr. Dunne?
Yes?
Just a question on 5C. If someone can explain the school calendar, please?
Oh.
It would be Dr. Semel.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So we are moving the first day of school to one day later than originally planned. It gives us an additional day of training for our teachers, which we so sorely need. We always do at the beginning of the year. So many parents also suggested that we front load our professional development this year. We took that suggestion that came right out of a committee. We also thought that it would be gentler for the first week of school to be a three-day week for our students when they return. And so we thought this was a win-win for everybody. We would get additional professional development, and they would get a gentler first week of school, and so we're asking for that adjustment. We are allowed and entitled to five professional development days for the calendar year. The New York State Education Department allows us those days, and they do count as days of attendance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Semel. Okay, all right. We're now going to move on to public questions. And if there's any questions from the public, please type them. But I'm going to preface something. If their questions are in relation to our reopening plan, I'm going to ask everyone who haven't already, there's a wealth of information out there on our district website. There's 89 questions, Q and A, that have been asked over the last few weeks, and Dr. Semel and her team have put it all coordinated on there. It goes into great detail. And also on the district website, under reopening, is the reopening plan presentation, which is on YouTube. It's a little over 14 minutes long. It goes into great detail. It's a PowerPoint presentation. It's narrated by Dr. Semel, and it answers a lot of the questions. So if anyone hasn't had the opportunity to do that, I suggest we all do that, please, because tomorrow at 7:00 PM, we're going to be holding our reopening plan presentation, community forum at 7:00 PM, where Dr. Semel and her staff will be answering all the much... All the questions that everyone has about the reopening that we have that's going to be going forward for the school system. You know, and I mentioned this last time when someone was on the Board of, when we were at the last Board, and we had a law conference that we attended. And, you know, one of the lawyers was talking about the reopening plan, and, you know, he had a great metaphor, and, you know, he used it. He said, you know, "We're building the plan as we're flying it." So, you know, the Dr. Semel and her team have done extensive work in this, and I thank you so much for the dedication and the long hours because the ultimate number one priority is everyone's safety. And I think that's the common denominator that we're all looking for, that everyone is safe. And then also, everyone is getting that quality education that everyone so deserves. I mean, to me, those are the most two paramount things that are so important, safety and education, and a quality education. And like I said, these are uncharted waters. Everything is always evolving. Everything is so fluid. We just ask that everyone, you know, be patient. If we don't get the questions to you as fast as we'd like, but we'll get those questions out to you. Dr. Semel, I think, do you want to just talk a little bit about maybe the committees or, you know, you know, all the preparation that you're going to put in place for tomorrow's presentation on the reopening plan? And then I'll look at the Q and A questions that people have out there, and we'll, you know, look to maybe answer some questions that aren't pertaining to this.
I'm sure everybody has heard from the governor and his announcement that we are permitted to reopen. When we met with our committees, and we had four committees, Social Emotional Committee, our Health and Safety Committee, our Teaching and Learning Committee, and our Scheduling Committee. We had representatives from the community and from our teaching staff on all of these committees. They all contributed greatly to our plan. And we used Health and Safety was our guiding principle. It is our most important committee and really led us through and showed us what we needed to do in our buildings. There were so many questions that we had, as well as our parents and teachers, that we had to answer first before we even able to open up the questions and answers to the community. We've been working at this hours and hours each day. We keep getting new guidance. Good news for me was that the Department of Health now trumps anything that the Department of Education puts out. So I was pleased about that. They have really done a very good job. One of the things that the governor did say that I would like to put a finer point on, he talked about schools being centers for testing and for contact tracing. I want to be very clear on that. Schools are not licensed to do any kind of medical testing. We can, and we do collaborate with the Department of Health, and we direct our parents to local health agencies. We also work with the Department of Health. When we've had a positive case, they've really informed us exactly how to proceed, what measures we needed to take, and how we go forward. And so I want to make sure everyone knows that we are not a testing center, and we are not prepared to be a testing center. But we do act in collaboration and coordination with the Department of Health. Steve Blone, our Executive Director, he has been instrumental in helping us too. And I do want to encourage folks to join us tomorrow. If you can't make it tomorrow, we are going to have a succession of Wednesdays. We'll have another community forum the Wednesday after that, and the Wednesday after that one as well. And of course, I will be putting out phone calls and emails about those other community forums that will be coming up.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Semel. Well, if people cannot make tomorrow's night forum, will that be recorded and uploaded anywhere for anyone to view that? Would that be on the district website?
We can record this, absolutely. The problem is, we do get a rough transcription from Zoom. Very wonderfully, our own Carrie Anne Carr has really gone through those transcriptions to make them much more legible. So we can post the transcription, and then after a few days, I think Mrs. Carr would be able to clean it up, so to speak, so that some of the pauses and other confusions in the conversations might be made clearer.
If I may, if I may, tomorrow night's meeting is being simulcast to our YouTube channel, so we will be able to link to the YouTube video at the conclusion of that meeting. So there'll be no transcribing or fixing of a transcription. That'll be an untranscribed version of the meeting.
Okay, so that will be, just as a whole, YouTube, so if the meeting is an hour long, they can view it again. Just go to YouTube and view it?
Right. I'm going to get the link and try and get that up tomorrow night or Thursday morning.
Okay, and then that link would be on our website?
That'll be on the reopen. We'll put it on the reopening information page.
Well, that's great. That's excellent for everyone that can't make that.
Are the questions going to be on the website, on, you know, advertised also, so they're not duplicated for the next couple of meetings?
I'm not sure what you mean, Tom.
The questions that are asked, you know, tomorrow night. Are they going to be, are they going to be up so people could see those questions?
I, once the meeting is over, I can post written responses and put them in as well. I believe Mrs. Carr is also curating our existing Q and A so that they can be sorted through by subject. For example, all the questions regarding special education will be separate. And then all the questions regarding health and safety will be in a separate place, and all the questions regarding teaching and learning. That, I mean, that's our goal, so that you can sort through those with much more deliberation.
Okay, thank you.
Great. And Dr. Semel, I'm just looking at some of the questions. A lot of them I know are going to be, you know, answered at tomorrow's meeting. I just want to make sure. We'll be talking about ISAC and tomorrow's reopening plan?
Yes.
Okay, so that will be, we'll be also, I know we're going to be talking about the air ventilation systems, and we'll also be talking about the A and B cohorts in the middle and high school.
As you mentioned, Mr. Dunne, that's answered on the Q and A.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, okay, excellent. Okay. And I think there was only five, and I think we know all those questions are answered or will be answered. I don't see. Is there any other questions from the public for the Board of Education?
Mr. Dunne?
Yes?
I see in a, I see in a separate Q and A area at the top of my screen that there are five active questions in a different area.
It was the ISAC, then it was the air ventilation. Someone was saying the screen's not visible. The other one was about the cohorts, and...
And then there's something about the classroom doors.
Yeah, classroom doors and fire hazards. Yeah, that was it. Dr. Semel, that will be discussed as far as the reopening plan.
We certainly will add that. One thing that is not up, I think, in my Q and A that came up tonight, we, in our personnel schedules, went through our clubs and extracurricula. There will be clubs at the secondary level. They will be operational. Whoever, as we define and identify our cohorts, students will be able to attend those clubs, and we will be running our full transportation schedule, so there will be late buses available for students as well.
All right. Just bear with me, folks. I'm looking at the Q and A. I'm looking at the chats, and I just want to make sure I'm not missing anyone or any of our questions. Yeah, this is all, you know, this will all be discussed, musicals and, you know, you know, and the kindergarten, all the questions that are populating up here, folks. A lot of them are already on the Q and A, on the 89 questions that are out there, and they will all be addressed at the opening meeting tomorrow.
So the next two meetings for community forum, if you can't make tomorrow night's forum, there will be another forum on Wednesday, the 19th, at 10 o'clock in the morning for those people who work evenings. And then the other one will be on Wednesday, the 26th, and that will be in the evening at 7:00.
Thank you. Let's give that afford to the opportunity for everyone. And again, as Mrs. Carr said, this will be all on YouTube, so you'd be able to, you know, view this in the event that you couldn't watch any of the scheduled times, the three times. Okay. I think, I think that's it. Are there any other questions for the Board of Education not pertaining to the school reopening that you might have? And if you do have one about the school reopening, please type it in if it's, you know, and not, well, you know, it's probably on our Q and A, because we've got so many that we had. But like I said before, if you haven't already, please go to the website, review the 89 Q and A questions, and then also Dr. Semel's YouTube video. That's 14 minutes long, the PowerPoint presentation, which answers a lot of the questions. Okay. All right. I don't think there is anything else. No other questions coming in. That's it. I was make sure. One last call. I miss anything? Yeah, and the last question is about the scheduling for the, when we go back. That's all going to be discussed, the ABA, ABA schedule. All righty. Okay. All right, folks, I'm just, I'm just trying to be fair. I don't want to cut anyone off. Okay. That's it. In the event, if you have a question that comes up afterwards, please send it into the Board of Education, and we will, I don't know if it looked at, and look to get a response back to you and add it to our programs. Again, Dr. Semel, thank you and your staff for everything, many, many long hours. Mr. Leggio met with Dr. Semel yesterday, and we left at 6:30 in the evening, and she was still there along, Mr. Smalley. So thank you for the long hours. It's greatly appreciated, and that's what makes this place great. Thank you. Okay, that now moves us on to reports and correspondence. I'm just going to quick talk. A few weeks ago, myself, and I think everyone else on the Board of Education, Dr. Semel, and I'm not sure who else from your team might have been at the law conference. The guys' conference was on July 21st and 22nd. It was virtual. It was a two-day event. Normally, in the past, it would be held at, you know, one day, you know, from 8:00 in the morning to about 4:00 in the afternoon. I'm just going to give a quick overview of the agenda and some of the topics, and then I'm going to turn it over to anyone on the Board that I know. There's a couple of people that had, they just wanted to talk about some specifics of that. You know, on day one, it started off with, it was the safety measures. Are they appropriate to contain the virus in the reopened schools, and how to protect your district from any potential liabilities? Again, this is a law conference. The second one was the costly issues on compulsory education and timeline and compliance. You know, as school districts open, they have to provide, you know, compensatory education to children with disabilities, and all the programs that go along with that. The third part of that was the collective bargaining and the reopening of schools. And that was day one. It was, again, a lot of, lot of information that was given out that day. Again, that was four hours long, so we wouldn't go into detail. We'd be here till probably about 2:00 in the morning. On day two, it was the Title IX regulation, stricter rules against sex discrimination in the K through 12, and what does it all mean? Then it was part one and part two was the new laws and regulations for the school, just different lawsuits that were out that they went about with different school districts. So it was a lot of, lot of information. It's, I enjoy going to them every year. You see new topics that are out there. It just keeps you up to all the, all the new laws that are out there and the regulations that you're compliant with, everything. I believe, Mr. Corrine, did you want to talk about something about the law conference?
I did. I just wanted to kind of piggyback on what you had shared, Mr. Dunne, about the Title, Title IX regarding sexual harassment. It just provided the board members who have served on the policy committee an opportunity to look at the new regulations associated with it. And we will be having a policy committee meeting probably in sometime in September to update our policies related to the new regulations.
Yeah, thank you so much. And that's what I said. That's what's, you know, you know, at these law conferences, it's to make sure that we're all compliant with all the new laws and regulations that are out there. Is there anyone else from the Board of Education that wants to say anything about the law conference? Okay, all right. And thank you for everyone that did attend that law conference. Get a lot of information. Also, Mr. Corrine, I believe you'd like to speak about the U.S. Census and that 2020 update?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Dunne. There has been some new developments related to the U.S. Census that I did just want to share with the ISOP community, given the new timelines for the census. So the census is sharing new information related to the response rate, so I just thought I'd also share that information. Nationwide, the census rate is 63.3% with a self-response rate. And starting this past week, the census has now hired and deployed field workers throughout the nation to follow up on households that have not completed their in-person census yet. And right now, the Bureau is looking at hitting at least 56 million homes nationwide. I'm not sure how I'm not sure how that particular number is related to Long Island, but I do know there are actual members of our community who are going to be deployed throughout Long Island and in ISOP to make sure that you do complete your census. If you do have somebody coming to your home to come, to get you to complete the census, they have particular uniforms and identification to identify themselves as workers of the census. Initially, the census deadline had been extended as related to COVID through October 31st, 2020. However, that has since changed per direction from the US Department of Commerce. The new deadline is now September 30th and that includes deadlines for self-response rates as well as follow-ups through the census. So the last possible day that the US Census can be completed by an individual is now September 30th, which gives us about a month and a half to make sure everybody is counted. I did just also want to share some response rates in our local community. Right now, the census rate, response rate in Suffolk County is 63.2%. It is slightly higher for our congressional district, which is 68.7%. And our rate for the town of, the township of ISOP, including the many hamlets of ISOP, is 66.5%. So we're near, we're above the state's average of 59.1, but there is still a need to make sure that everybody in our community completes the census because it determines our federal funding for education, healthcare, transportation and so much more and also impacts our representation in the United States House of Representatives. So between now and September 30th, if you have not completed your census, please, please make sure that you do either through online, through mail or by phone. And if you don't, you may be getting a visit from a Census Bureau employee. So again, please make sure you fill out your census. And thank you, thank you for the time and allowing me to share that, many reasons why ISOP counts. So thank you, Mr. Deneen.
Thank you, Mr. Karine, I appreciate all that information you gave on that. If you haven't already, feel like your response, Mr. Karine, are they still going to be doing the chemicing door-to-door or is that stopped?
They are, yeah, so they're, they've developed safety procedures to make sure that you are safe and that they're safe for door-to-door interaction and they're also calling people on the phones as well.
Yeah.
Hey, Matt? Matt, what was the participation rate last time they took your census, did they say?
They shared the, the state's rate for participation. So the state's final participation rate in 2010 was 64.6% and right now we're at 59.1. So we're, we're pretty close to what we were at in 2010. But as a result of those numbers, our representation in Congress declined by two seats. So I'm fearful to, to see if those participant, participation rates don't increase what our representation in the House will look like.
Right, all right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and Dr. Smell, I just missed this one and I, I don't really like going back, but all, all the questions weren't pertaining to an open session to, you know, the school reopening. And there was just one about the Sherwood Principle that's still ongoing?
Yes, it is. That is in the works. We hope to have news very quickly and that's really all I can say at this time.
Thank you, I just wanted to acknowledge, I didn't, I just saw that and I just, I just didn't want to miss that for that individual. Thank you, Dr. Smell.
And Mr. Deneen, I did also just want to share one other update not related to the census. For those of you who are following, the state's interim commissioner of education is resigning to take on another position. Shannon Tahoe is resigning effective, I believe, Thursday. So it was announced today that the chancellor of the Board of Regents will be resigning from her position to take on that interim commissioner role and then the vice chair of the Board of Regents will then step up to acting chancellor. So I just wanted to provide an update related to the leadership going on in the state education department as well.
Great, thank you. Okay. All right, any, anything else on the reports and correspondence? I don't believe there's anything else.
There is one more thing, which I will be posting to our website when we have more news. New York State School Boards Association has been actively pushing hard with our legislators to provide more funding to schools for some of the un, some, some of the tremendous expenses that were just not budgeted for, like masks and PPE and polycarbonate separators, extra personnel, cleaning supplies. I can go on and on. And so when New York State School Boards has a, a real package together that they're going to ask us to help them endorse, I will be coming out to the public, talking about that and pushing hard for our legislators to help us. We need some help.
Yeah, it's true, it is very expensive, thank you. Okay, that moves us to our dates to remember. As Dr. Smell had said earlier, the community forum reopening meeting will be tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. The second will be on August 19th at 10:00 AM and then the third one will be on August 26th at 7:00 PM. Again, they'll all be available via the district website, via YouTube. Our next Board of Ed meeting will be August 25th and it will be via Zoom. The governor extended the executive order to conduct meetings virtually until September 5th. So until then, we'll still be conducting our meetings this way. And September 1st and 2nd will be the superintendent's conference days. All right. And that brings us to the end of our meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Again, I hope everyone's able to make these community forum reopening meetings tomorrow or the next two meetings that we do have. There's a wealth of information out there. Again, please keep the questions coming in. If you don't see that they're answered, and again, please visit the website to see the 89 questions already posted and Dr. Smell's on the YouTube presentation. Okay. I'd like to get a motion to close the meeting then.
So moved.
That was Mr. Austin and then the second was Mrs. Flora. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Close and then the motions carry. Thank you, everyone, stay safe and I hope everyone has got their electric back. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.